Okay, it is five o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 revised orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL Chapter 38, Section 18, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March 31, 2025. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the School Committee Recorder, the Berkshire Edge, and Berkshire Eagle, and will be broadcasted on a later date. So let the record show that eight members are seven members are here. And we'll do a roll call when we do the vote to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yep, I make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to MGL C 30A 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's litigating position. Following executive session, the school committee will reconvene the regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. So Sarah.
Aye.
Cory.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Aye. Bonnie.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote, so we will go into executive session to come back. Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We will reconvene back into open session. First thing on the agenda in open session is the minutes of December 14, 2023. Do I have a motion? So move. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Motion by Jason, a second by Anne. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Request for approval. We're going to take two votes tonight. Jason, do I have the first motion?
Yep, I move that Berkshire Hills launches an investigation.
So the first, do I have a second?
Second.
So the first motion is to authorize an independent investigation into the incident involving the book. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Unanimous. Do I have the second motion?
Yep, I move that Berkshire Hills hires the firm of Cohen, Kenny, Valisenti, and Cook to conduct the investigation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Bill. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And for those who are listening or in the audience, the final report in a redacted version will be made public as soon as it is finished. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
I'd like to share a couple things. First of all, we use this setup, which is an unusual one of putting us up on the stage so we could get the sound quality right because it's a hybrid meeting and there are microphones and owls. And Steve will talk about this later, but we have microphones to amplify the sound so everybody can hear us in this space. And then the owls are so people who are online can can hear us. At some point, and really the bulk of this meeting will be around public comment, we'll urge you to come up, but there's a microphone over there and it'll be important that you use that microphone so other people in this space can hear you. And then there's an amplifier that connects to the owl so people can hear online. Okay? So that's the the technical side of things. What what I'd like to do is is share a little context for tonight's meeting. And some of you have been to the parent and family meeting we had last week or the staff meeting we had last week or for that matter, today I checked in with speakers in this building. So for those who've been to one or more of those meetings, this part of it will be a little repetitive, though it continues to get updated. And then and then we'll move to the public comment. So again, what I'd like to do tonight is share a brief summary of what happened. Obviously, the investigation that was just voted to happen, we'll we'll do that in much more detail. I'd like to then apologize and share some next steps for policies and procedures. I'll briefly summarize some of what we're doing to support students, families, and staff, and then open it up to questions, concerns, and suggestions. And hopefully, the bulk of our time tonight will be spent listening to you. We're working very hard to make this better, and your ideas here or later by email or calls can be very helpful. So people have been reaching out to me a lot, and I appreciate that. So the quick summary, on December 8th at around 2:00, I received a call from Chief Storey. I then called Miles Week, the principal. I spoke with Steve Bannon, the school committee chair. I spoke again with Chief Storey. An officer O'Brien visited the school in plain clothes after school hours to try to investigate. Many of you have seen that investigation. It was recorded on his body camera and is now public. Social and news media detailed the incident. Local and national press picked up on the story. The ACLU and press filed a freedom of information request. I had sent two emails initially, one to families in the community, and then I sent another one with Steve, the school committee chair, detailing an apology. High school students held a protest. Middle school students held a protest. Dozens of parents and students emailed me, the school committee, and the chief, sharing their concerns. A group of parents also created a petition. The chief sent an apology. We held self-family meetings, staff meetings, today's middle school lunch, mostly with seven to eight threads. We've received letters from the ACLU, GLAD, and a law firm, Todd and Weld. And the most recent thing that happened tonight was that the school committee voted both to conduct an investigation and to hire a particular firm to do that. As I said, I've previously apologized for this incident, in particular, my role in letting the police into the school for a warrantless investigation. In addition, I've also recognized that this was likely a targeted racist and homophobic attack on a colleague and teacher, the GSA and the LGBTQI plus community and the actual book. I'm sorry that I didn't see all of that in that moment. I hope we can work together to ensure that this doesn't happen again, to support students and families, and to support staff. In terms of, and I just keep speaking on this. Or you want to?
So for the school committee point of view, we have a policy subcommittee that will formal review and update policies and bring those policies back to the entire school committee. Per policy, that has to happen at two meetings, usually consecutive, and then at the second meeting, there'll be a vote. We will consult with librarians, principals, the superintendent, and other staff and parents as we develop these policies. I don't anticipate a change to our philosophy. Rather, what we want to make sure is that the processes outlined in our policies reflect our values. Those policies and procedures are connected to the following topic and perhaps others, one of which is the current policies and the MOU with the Great Barrington Police. The policy subcommittee does have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 24 at 5:00 PM, and you can look for the posting of that, and that will be open to the public.
Okay. And and just to add a little more on that, the the basic policies that we're going to look at are the role of police in schools, the process to select books and materials, the process to appeal those selections, investigations of harassments and threats, and issues connected to student and staff safety. There may be other ones out there. I'm going to go quickly, not because it's unimportant, but because I really want the bulk of the time to be on hearing concerns and feedback. In the in the middle school, there've been family forums, there've been crew or advisory lessons. They're working on using our practices around restorative practices to try to rebuild trust. And there's work with the existing GSA to try to support students and the whole community. At the high school, similar things, lots of work with the GSA, some poster development and and fundraising, meetings with representatives from Berkshire Pride and the Elizabeth Friedman Center, an opportunity for some staff PD also on the 24th, the same day as the policy meeting, to support staff in addressing issues of bias and hate towards LGBTQI plus community students and any other student population. And staff will learn more about how to discuss topics with their.
I'm going to run to this meeting. I'll be back. I already did so, and I said, leave it on the porch. So if they knock, they might knock, but yeah.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Maddie, was that your phone? Is she logged in as you? Okay, thanks.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, guys.
Good. I didn't mean to call you out on that, and I appreciate everybody's Zoom's complicated, right? Zoom's complicated. So, yeah, that's funny. She has a special link that you get as a rep to the school committee, and that's what happened there. So again, we have what started as a high school DEI advisory committee that's now district-wide, and they've been needing additional work in restorative practices, particularly at the high school with Sarah Mead, and then a number of students who've done, 17 students have done some training in this area. The Student Adult Advisory Board also has a DEI subgroup. Many of those people are here. Thank you for both being here and your work. And then ongoing work in reviewing two curricula that we've used in the past, the World of Difference curriculum and the No Place for Hate curriculum, and and some additional training with student facilitators to move forward on that. This has impacted students and families, but and the community as a whole, but it's also impacted staff. I'm trying to do a lot of work with the unions on policies and procedures, with the librarians on policies and procedures, with the school attorney on legal matters, and and with the town manager and police on their role in schools. And sometimes people get confused about that. We're a regional school district that is the three towns, Great Barrington, Stockbridge, and West Stockbridge. We physically exist, or the schools do, in Great Barrington, and the police chief reports to the the town manager and the select board. Okay? So what I'd like to do, and I'll have Steve frame this, but open time up for for people to do, ask questions and raise concerns.
So let me set the ground rules. Comments or questions are welcome. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and they will be recognized once. We will recognize students, staff, parents of students, residents of the three towns, or taxpayers of the three towns. If you have a relationship with the school district, we will recognize you. What we won't recognize, especially with the Zoom link, and there are a total of 87 people on Zoom, and I count about 60 in the room, what we won't do is recognize people who have no relationship with the school district. You've probably sent us emails already, and we've read them, and tonight is for someone who has a relationship with the district. The way I'll do this is if you want to speak in person, please come up to the microphone at the podium so everyone can hear you. I'll alternate between people on Zoom and people in the room so everyone gets to speak. So I will start. There's a hand up already, and don't be shy about going to the microphone there. So the first one is Peter Merkett. You'll have to state your name, your address, and your relationship to the district, please.
Steve, for people in the audience, do you want them to just line up?
Yeah, that would be ideal if you would line up, even if it's just two or three at a time. Peter, go ahead.
I may not qualify by the criteria you just mentioned. My name is Peter Merkett. I live in Monterey. My son was formerly a student at Monument Mountain High School.
Go ahead.
I want to start by saying I'm grateful for the civility with which this incident has proceeded all along. However, the question I have never heard answered is whether the police in searching the school violated the law and what the consequences might be if they did.
So let me be clear, we will probably not be able to answer most questions. That one question needs to be directed towards the town of Great Barrington and the police force. The great, the school district does not, is not going to answer that. But it's an excellent question.
Okay.
Can we just remove the ability to speak? Yeah. Go right ahead.
Dan Nielsen, I am a resident of Monterey, a parent of two children in the district, including one here at Du Bois Middle School. I very much appreciate that an investigation is moving forward, and I do appreciate the apologies that we've heard, multiple apologies. I want to make sure that the district leadership knows that the attack which began in this district on December 8th is still continuing, that today, today, in this building, photographs from this book that we're not talking about are being passed around by kids in this school and being laughed at. It is a homophobic attack which continues today. It's not a complete apology when the harm is still going on. So I think I speak for many people in the parent community here in the district when I say that we recognize that you're taking steps, and that it's very far from being enough, that the attack continues today on our kids.
Thank you. Oh, the Tucci family.
I don't know if I can be, can I be heard?
Yes, yes.
Great. Hi there. My name is Nick Stucci. I'm a junior at Monument Mountain.
Go right ahead.
All righty. So essentially, what I just wanted to say was, I accessed a lot of helpful literature from the from the classroom of the teacher who was at the center point of this whole thing, and it sort of made me realize that I was welcome and that I wasn't a freak and I wasn't a horrible person for being who I am. Around that time was definitely at the start of COVID, so that was a very isolating and fearful moment for me and a lot of people. And around that time, I also started doing work in our community. And being a person who is queer, it sort of feels isolating when you're in that environment and you feel like you are someone who is not appreciated, not valued, and not real. So the existence of these books in classrooms is a net positive for children like me. And frankly, the apology that we, that the people who are affected received from Chief Storey is not enough because all, like, all I'm expecting from the people who I, all I'm expecting from people in charge is that they are here to protect our entire community. And the way that this was handled did not feel like it was protecting multiple people, but just one person. And to think that I went to a school that harbored someone who would complain about this to the to the police in a direct, in a directed, bigoted attack is horrifying. And I don't even want to think what that means to people who currently go to that school and identify as trans, non-binary, queer in general. So I guess that's just my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Bob, Dan Oldson is the name. I live in Stockbridge. My grandsons are across the street there in Muddy Brook. Commander Ward, it's not a not a easy position you guys have at all. My first question is for the group. How many people have read the book? Maybe half or so. The first thing I did when I heard about it was I ordered the book from the library. It came in two days, I read it. I didn't, I'm trying to understand whether the original concern that prompted the visit was, there's a piece in the papers, but there was an allegation that it was pornography with the book. I'm wondering, was it, was that the concern that was pornographic, whether it was not age appropriate for the for the students?
As I understand it, they were trying to decide whether the book was pornographic or not.
And the definition of pornography is roughly material that depicts nudity or sexual acts for the purpose of sexual stimulation, that the presence of nudity or sexual acts, and appears that media does not necessarily make that media pornographic if the purpose of that media is for something other than sexual stimulation. Those of us who have read the book, would you say anything in terms of pornography in the book? Thank you.
Rebecca Honig? Just unmute yourself, please.
Hi, I'm actually Miles Honig Briggs. I'm a fifth grader at W E B Du Bois, and I was on the bus yesterday, and one of the kids said a homophobic comment, and like, one of them said, like, oh, I don't go on TikTok, I'm not gay, or something. And I said, well, I am gay. And then they repeatedly asked me questions about like the book, like what their thoughts were on it, and they told me that it was pornography, and they showed me pictures of the book. And I told them, it's not, it's not, and they kept saying hurtful comments about like either like my opinion or the book. I really didn't feel comfortable in that situation because I was being targeted, and they recorded me, they took a picture of me without my permission, which made me feel very unsafe. And I strongly feel that this book should not be banned, so the fact that they were targeting me on water made me very uncomfortable.
Thank you. This school committee apologizes, and we support you, and we will look into, have the principal look into this very hateful act.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Meesnaber. I'm a parent of a student at Muddy Brook. And as we just heard from a fifth grader, as I listened to what we were talking about, I heard what our plans are from Du Bois, I heard what our plans are at Monument, but what are our plans at Muddy Brook? Because we just heard from a fifth grader. They were in Muddy Brook last year. Right, this was, these kids are coming to Du Bois from Muddy Brook. So what are we doing to teach our students and support our teachers in supporting our students there so that by the time they get to Du Bois, they have a foundation for this work? Thank you.
As you probably know, our three principals are here, and Katie, so other people could hear, could you come up to the microphone and just talk a little bit about some of the professional development you all did over the summer with the person from the State Department of Education?
Yes, we had training in the first couple days of school for our teachers, outlining a whole range of things that we can do to make kiddos feel more comfortable and have them more open. We are, we, from that, we have a list of about eight teachers who are not our school adjustment or our clinical team. The assumption is that they're very helpful anyway, but we have eight or so, I guess you would, we call them resources, but I guess they would be allies. And so when we have kiddos or we have parents who need some support, then we reach out to this group of folks and spend some time with families, talking through some of the finer points of students who are trans or just gender questioning at this point. So we've instituted some of those things, and we hope to have them come back for one more training before the end of the year. But our teachers are are very open and welcoming.
Okay, thank you.
Did I add the follow-up question?
Yeah, go right ahead. Just go to the microphone. People at home can hear you too.
So I think it's really great for our teachers to be opening, welcoming, and for them to have the skills that they need. But what are we doing to give our students the skills that they need and the knowledge that they need to not be homophobic when they hit seventh grade, to not be transphobic, to not be bullying another kid on the bus? What are we doing to like foster a community in which our students don't feel like that's acceptable behavior? That's okay.
I mean, as Katie comes up, this is sort of the the root of all our work, right? Schools exist in the societies where they exist, and and for a whole host of reasons, people don't treat other people the way we would all want to be treated. And and it's, it can come out in in homophobia, it can come out in racism, it can come out in antisemitism. We've made a commitment to this work, and we could detail some of that. And obviously, we have much more work to do because it continues to happen. Katie, if you could talk a little bit about it, and then I might even ask Miles and Christie to talk about some of it as well.
So at the elementary school level, we we base anything we do in kindness. So a lot of our work is having feelings, identifying feelings, being able to acknowledge other people's feelings other than people's perspectives. And through positive behavioral support, we have high-five tickets. We we integrate that kindness in everything we do. But that's where we couch all of our, you know, if someone's bullied or someone's gender is brought forward, we base it in kindness.
All right, Kristen, do you want to?
So in terms of what we do in the middle school in order to create a community that is based on and embodies not just tolerance, but respect for all of individuals that are here so that everybody can come to school and feel welcome, and like here in school is a place where they can be their full selves, their full selves. We we work really hard at that. And one of the major pieces of that program is our group program, which strives to form connections so that every. connections so that every student has at least one, hopefully more adults in the building whom they feel they can be completely themselves and count on, no matter what, so that they always have a stalwart ally. We also strive to be very responsive when incidents occur so that they can be fully processed through a system which is restorative in that it sees to, you know, the needs of the victim or the target, to make sure that those needs are met and that person can feel fully comfortable again. That's one of the things that's at the heart of a restorative response. And we also do our best to respond with education around not simply a perpetrator, but also folks who are bystanders. We believe and understand that bystanders to an incident of racism or homophobia are both impacted and on some level also part of an incident. We don't always, I'm going to butcher the quote because I'm not ready with it, but it runs along the lines of we, we remember the silence of our friends even more than we remember the shouts of our, our enemies. And we work really hard through our program and lessons to help folks be good allies and explicitly teach what being a good ally means. Hope I've answered the question. If there are further questions, I'd like to ask.
Thank you. And I'm sort of putting you in a, in a difficult spot to try to summarize the depth of all the work on the fly in a meeting, but, but I do think it's important to, to touch on it. Christie?
I think I'm just going to echo what Katie and Miles have just shared. Our work is very parallel and it's incredibly difficult because people are not always kind. And we are just a microcosm of our society. People in our society are not kind always. And so this is challenging work and we strive to always do better. You've heard us repeatedly talk about our value around equity and inclusiveness. And we believe in that, but creating a culture that that is actually valued and demonstrated all the time is a constant challenge. Hearing the challenges some of our students who've already shared this evening have described, they're real, they're happening in real time in our buildings right now. Anytime an incident like this happens in the schools, it brings to light what is always there. And we just have to, adults and as a community, commit to doing better. So a part of that is asking adults in the building to do better. Yesterday, we had a faculty meeting and I literally, one of the things I did was print out the Massachusetts state law around all of this and remind adults like what the expectations are for ourselves and our work as public servants for all of our students in our schools. And I've been messaging out to adults in the building, if you see something, say something. Peter Largio and I, as administrators in the building, can't address things that we don't know yet. Asking victims to always be the one to report isn't fair to them. And so I also echo what Miles just shared, which is the importance of building the, the sense of a collective and the importance of bystanders standing up and saying something as well, so that the administrative team can intervene and hold perpetrators, those who are harming others accountable. Part of that is consequences, but another very, very important part of that is all of the restorative work that we've been doing. At the high school today, Sarah Mead, who has taken the lead on our restorative justice work with our 17 students, held a circle conversation in a classroom where our conversation about this issue had gone sideways. And overall, I think that that conversation went well, and yet there are still students who struggle with it. So it's not easy. And I think it's about commitment long-term and trying to improve our culture. I do think there is curriculum out there that could help us that we need to reengage with. Peter mentioned the two specifically that I've been in conversation about, World of Difference and No Place for Hate. And I think there's always room for improvement and the administrative team is working really hard to try to support our students.
Next online is Katie O'Neil. Just state your name and address, please, and your relation to the district.
Hi, my name is Katie O'Neil. I'm a resident of Richmond and I have a son who is a ninth grader. And I'm also a public library director, so I wanted to, first of all, acknowledge your district's wonderful librarians and highlight them as a resource. As a librarian, we've been preparing for moments like these for a while now, as you're all aware, as we face these incidents across the country. And your district's very lucky to have very excellent librarians who stand ready to help in situations like these. And I want to also offer my support and any assistance that I can provide to the district. A lot is being asked of you and these are difficult and nuanced conversations that have to take place. And I, I hate to offer ideas and then not have the wherewithal to back them up with action. So please let me know if I can be of support to the district's efforts, because if we zoom out, this incident is not just about this one book. It's about intellectual freedom. It's about protecting our students and communicating our values to our students and teaching them how to stand up for those values. So again, I just want to thank you for, for having these conversations, commend the district staff and especially librarians, and offer my support and action as you undertake the rest of your work here.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Deborah McCall. I am a queer parent of a queer kid here at Du Bois. And I am, though I appreciate these many flora that have existed and that have been held, but I'm kind of tired of statement making without actual real conversation. And so I'm going to make a statement, but I'm also going to say that it's a little unclear to me what's happening to the statements that we're all making. And it's not clear where we're going to head up, but I'm going to say something that I do hope will land and I hope will be some guidance going forward to this committee. I want to start by saying that I had deeply traveled and deeply pained to hear how this grossly handled incident provided an invitation to express even more hate. In this sense, this was a very successful campaign against our kids and against our schools, because already the emotional and psychological and material fallout for the people involved is consequential. And I haven't heard any real engagement with that. I hear a lot of talk, but I really think that the depth of this is so troubling. And as somebody who could not have imagined being out at the age of, to spray young people are out as even on line or as trans, queer in terms of gay or lesbian or bi, or the very many lists that I'm always being educated by, it's like, I'm, I just, I want to cry and I will not cry. But I will say that as you think of policies, that you're not just mission driven, driven by values, as I think Peter, you said, but we need harder girls. I would, I invite you, I demand actually, as a parent, that you take this case and you create policies with respect to the relationship with the police and the relationship to curriculum and book complaints, that would not have allowed this to happen under any circumstance whatsoever. Otherwise, this is just something that happened and the policies will be as underspecified and discretionary as they currently are. And that would be a shame because our kids aren't going to suffer through this and they are going to be targeted through more examples of hate. And we talked a lot in the last years about how if a reader stands up and accepts, and states, uses language of hate and accepts hateful, racist, homophobic, misogynistic kinds of statements, then it's an invitation to hate more. And that is exactly what's happening. So I beseech you to think about something like this never happening again, in the sense that if it happens, if a parent has a problem with a book, they know exactly what to do. If they approach the police, the police know exactly to say, no, not our business. Go to the school. Here's a process. And to really think very carefully from all different directions and with a lot of different input from people who have had the experiences, how to make sure it doesn't happen and when it does happen. Because otherwise, like I said, I'm repeating myself, it's our kids who have suffered through this and they are going to continue to be penalized and punished. And the hate is going to win. And the hate has already won in many substantial ways in this case. So thank you for listening. I also want to say, I have no idea what other members of this committee feel or think about this issue. And I think the fact that I'm talking to a panel of people that are representing our school board, that we have no sense of what we feel as, even as a thought here, as individuals, is also for me really troubling. So I just want to end on that note.
Lisa and Jason Baumgart?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Okay, great. My name is Lisa Baumgart and my husband and I have a son attending Monument. We live in Cheshire. I would like to start by reading the school's mission statement. It is our mission to ensure all students are challenged through a wide range of experiences to become engaged and curious learners and problem solvers who effectively communicate, respect diversity, and improve themselves in their community. We are all here tonight because we have a responsibility to protect children and support this mission that encourages children how to think, not what to think. My husband and I attended the forum last week and we were shocked by the attacks against Peter Dillon for his role in allowing the police into the school. People making these comments are missing the point. This whole issue is about following the rule of law. Peter and Miles, you did the right thing by allowing the police to attempt to confiscate material in the school that is harmful to minors. According to Massachusetts general law, it states, quote, "Massachusetts's matter is harmful to minors if it describes or represents nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement, so as to appeal predominantly to the prurient interest of minors." It is obvious the pictures in the book Gender Queer describe and show nudity and sexual conduct such as oral sex on page 168 and masturbation on page 62, appealing to the prurient interest of minors. On page 168, it reads, quote, "I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life," end quote. Keeping this book and others like it in the school is a clear violation of the law. If we don't take a stand against inappropriate material allowing, allowed in the school, we are abdicating our responsibility as administrators, teachers, parents, and community members. We are either protecting the innocence of children's lives or we are complicit in their abuse. I want to be clear. We do not support book bans and censorship of any kind. We respect all people. However, school officials' priority should be to consider whether material is age and developmentally appropriate and work alongside parents to decide what books librarians and teachers keep in stock. This issue is afflicting multiple school districts across our nation. Here is one small example. The Brevard County School District has pulled the book Gender Queer from its libraries. Superintendent Dr. Mark Mullins stated, quote, "BPS staff immediately agreed that this book violates our guidelines and that it has no place in our school district. I have directed staff to ensure there are no other similar books in our libraries," end quote. At BHRSD, school officials' position on the book Gender Queer and similar books needs to be reconsidered from a legal standpoint. Peter, your role is simple. Follow the rule of law. Do not be influenced by political ideology. Parents, this is a people call to action for you to stand up and prevent the endangerment of the welfare of your child. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I'm a resident of Monterey. I'm a parent of two children in the district and we have successfully disagreed with our caller and suggest that we not call the direction of the physical Florida, where this one's actually recently developed several different supplementary dictionaries. So maybe going back to this room right here are the issues that I want to start by thinking, the committee for taking this seriously. And I want to thank Peter for sort of sharing what has been done. I also want to notice, as I'm pointing out, a positive response, that I'm feeling really tired of responses to pardon. And actually, I want to rephrase that, responses to criticism. What has become clear to many of us who have worked with youth in this district, to many of us who have been part of advocacy and activism in this area, who have read the Stoll Report, as mentioned, that this district have conducted over two years and influenced testimony from students at all levels and faculty. What we have heard here in this room over the course of the last couple of months, right, is that this actually, this incident on this upper eight was not a isolated incident. It was not the first time there was a loss, right? That actually many, many children and educators who are queer, who are LGBTQ, who are BIPOC, are telling all of us again and again and again, that this is often not the same place and that instead of FaceTime and instead of calling partners to come in for a period of time or sort of work on some curriculum around the edges or optional P for staff, right, but actually partnering over a long term for engaged solutions, right? That's, that's what the ask has been and that's what the ask continues to be for most of us, not all of us obviously, but most of us here today. And I want to say that there are real, there are really good partners, right? You all know this in our community and in our state, there are really good models for not just engaging and listening to you, but really empowering them to lead in ways that do not require that they relive their own trauma, right? And the ones that don't require that to happen, faculty as well. I'm thinking of things like Safe Schools, right, which is a free resource in the state of Massachusetts. I'm thinking of things like the DOJ Spirit Program, right, which are laying multiple troarys, right, called the NACIS, our partner, our school, just to be honest, that those are really good models, right? And there's a lot of really smart people here and we can do this. I know it's hard. I know it's not going to work, right? And it's not an excuse to have done more and done better, right? And this, this isn't the first time. It won't be the last time if there's harm either, right? But I think that instead of responses and activity, what we really need, right, long-term goals, not pushing this down, not more meetings. And I agree with Deborah. I would love to hear more. I would love more conversation. That's a little more back and forth for us for that. That's not where we are right now, but let's, let's, let's get there. Thank you.
Erica Milkie?
Hi, thank you for my comment. I had to reiterate that point.
Just your address for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I live in Houston, Massachusetts. My son is a student at the high school. I'm feeling super emotional from the last, I guess, every single comment, so I'm going to try to pull it together for what I wanted to say. to try to pull it together for what I wanted to say. I want to draw to, I've been thinking a lot over the last few days about the teacher in question at the middle school. This teacher was instrumental in my son's middle school experience. He was lucky enough to have her as his crew teacher for both 11th, sorry, seventh and eighth grade. And I've been hearing for years about what an asset she has to the school, and how many students felt like they had a safe place because of her. And I want to draw attention to the Stoke Collective report. Page 33, I just want to point out that the term rock star, which I'm about to explain in the Stoke Collective report, is used eight times. And the Stoke Collective was looking at ways that our district, recognizing that we were failing our students in inclusive, in inclusion and diversity issues. They created this report in response to the district saying, we, we know we need help. What are the next steps? It was a lot of money, it was a lot of effort, there were many parents, many students, many alumni, many community members that were involved. There's a lot of sentences that are worth reading in this report. I just want to read this one. DEIB rock stars who are found at all levels of the district need much more spaciousness and autonomy in their work, as well as unequivocal support from above for intentionally mentoring and building up DEIB skills and practices among their colleagues. How can we do this? So this question was asked via the Stoke report, back when we got it many months ago. I've read the support many times. I keep using this as a blueprint for how I could first be active in the middle school. Now my son's in the high school. These are real issues that aren't new. This is decades in the making. I mean, I've spoken with people who have graduated from Monument, back when I graduated from high school in the 90s. These racial and gender, et cetera, equity issues have existed for as long as Monument has existed. The school committee has expressed a desire to make a difference, to change this sad history. The Stoke Collective gave us a pretty useful and clear guideline for how we do it. Thinking about the teacher in question at the middle school, this teacher was arguably the middle school's rock star for every level of equity and inclusion. And now that they're being attacked on all fronts, now that every part of their action is being called into question, I can't think of a teacher that has had more impact on more students than this person. It is really, it makes me really sad, and it makes me really enraged that the student was not supported more by the school and the district. It makes me really fearful for all of the students that this teacher was holding and supporting. It makes me wonder what's happening to all of those students in the middle school that relied on that one teacher. I mean, a lot of what the district is working towards in crew, et cetera, is making sure that every student has one teacher that totally has their back. And I really feel like that teacher had a lot of students' backs. Sorry, Stephen?
Your time is just about up.
Okay, okay. So I'm just wondering, how do, how do we, how do we protect students? How do we support students? How do we support that teacher? And I also want to point out, especially after the call that came in, that was counter to all the rest of these comments where people were supporting the action, I feel like this fear-based response is only going to increase as the election cycle intensifies. And let's really try not to react from fear, and instead, react, instead respond to what students and teachers need. That's what I want to say.
My name is Alicia Harding, and my kid, I live at 261 North Plain Road. My kids are Maddie and Lily Harding. Sorry for the interruption. But I did want to come and say a couple of things in person, because this is important to me and my family. I do have a child who is trans, and he had that journey here at DeBois in the support that teacher that Erica is talking about, and the GSA, and many of the teachers in the school was incredible for us. Some of these, the GSA was the only reason he came to school, you know, and that slowly friends builds, it doesn't even go to GSA anymore. But it matters a lot. And so, that's why I was so disappointed to see y'all walk into that silly trap. That was so obvious to those of us who pay attention to these things. But I deeply thank you for your genuine apology, because I can tell it's sincere, and you make mistakes, you do it wrong sometimes. I've done it, oh, now I do it wrong all the time, and I'm always working on it. We're always working on how to support them better. But what concerns me a lot about my child's experience here has been more with the students than with the teachers, which we found a tremendous amount of support. But we're not seeing, you know, that lived, that correcting in the moment. And there's still, like many others have said, a culture among the students that is really harmful. And I do fear that the adults are kind of purposely taking a blind eye as long as, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing to satisfy how we feel they should. You know, with my child coming to, going to high school that next year, comments have been coming up recently, like, oh, I heard it's worse at high school. Are there any other options for high school? Do I have to go? It's not comfortable here, but like, you know, when it comes to all of these things, you know, he's heard it's a lot worse and harsh in high school. I don't want that for him. And unfortunately, this breeds more of it, because the people who are most taken by this false claims were the kids themselves, and now they're using it like, like to hear Miles, little Miles on the phone, his spirit, anyone knows them, his spirit is so gigantic. And the idea that someone's going to break that for them, or any of our kids is devastating. So I just want to say thank you for doing this. And let's, let's do that.
Dave Edson.
Hi, can you?
We got it.
Dave Edson, 246 Park Street in Great Barrington. I'm a parent of a Muddy Brooks student. I'm a former faculty at DeBois, and I had the honor and pleasure of supporting the GSA while I worked there. It was impeccably executed, and it was the highlight of every week. Those students that came there were different than in any other class, because they were themselves. I also directed the musical at the, at Monument this past spring, so I care deeply about the students, faculty, and families throughout the entire district. I want to thank you for acknowledging the racism and homophobia that is connected to this incident, and I don't want us to lose sight of this. For perspective, there's selective outrage happening. There's graffiti in the bathrooms, and racial, homophobic, and transphobic slurs that are thrown around on the daily that are worse than any content in any book in any library. To my knowledge, no one has ever called the cops over those things. So what has happened is a disgusting and dangerous abuse of power, of power. What I have not heard, which Erica was also just speaking about, is what is the plan to support the teacher that has been harmed, and the students that have been harmed? What's the plan for healing? The students are watching us very closely, and every day that goes by, the harm continues and can increase. So we talk about restorative justice, but I am genuinely curious about how and if you put that practice with this, our word of people being harmed, going to heal. So there are students that are currently enrolled in the district who before this incident in December did not feel safer when the police would show up, and this has thrown fuel onto the fire. So the bottom line is that I think we need to not wait for the next thing to happen. We need to be a lot more proactive rather than reactive, as the Stoke report clearly, clearly suggested. Ignorance and hate happen every day. There are students who have trouble learning because they don't feel supported enough enough. So my emphasis, my bottom line is healing and on distant act for students and teachers and families of marginalized identities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Rolland, and I have a son here at DeBois Middle School. And I am here reluctantly. I really wish I did not have to show up tonight. And I'm glad everybody else did, and I'm glad that I did. And I had no plan on speaking this evening, but two things compelled me to get up. And first, I was hearing Miles talk about his experience on the bus. That is unacceptable. That is a fire that needs to be put out tomorrow, tomorrow. It cannot happen anymore. And the other things that are happening with the passing around of the images from the book, unacceptable, with homophobia, unacceptable, something has to happen tomorrow. I don't care if it's every crew session has to have a discussion about this, a zero tolerance policy, and then you can deal with the policies down the road, but something has to happen immediately. It's outrageous. It's outrageous. LGBTQIA+ individuals are almost twice as likely to do self-harm, and are more than four times as likely to be victims of violence and bullying. This is not something that can be pushed down the road. I know that this has revealed something that's already, you know, lying underneath. And I didn't know, I didn't realize that this was happening, or that there was such an issue with this. I find it surprising, I'm naive, I guess, about living in Great Barrington. I thought that somehow we were, we were beyond these things in some way. And I guess it is naivete. The other thing that compelled me to stand up was the comments from the individual from Cheshire. The only thing that she said that I agreed with was that Peter Dillon should not be vilified for his mistake that he apologized for. Everything else is, is, in my opinion, ridiculous, but I read the book. I read the book, and I found it compelling and informative, and now I understand why pronouns matter so much, you know, that one little thing, and I'm grateful for it. It does not meet the definition of pornography by any stretch. And if the presence of that book on the shelf in the classroom in this middle school eases the journey of one LGBTQIA+ student, it belongs on that shelf.
Elizabeth Torsey Wilson.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can, yeah.
Great, great. Yeah, so my name is Elizabeth Torsey Wilson. I live in Otis, and my middle daughter attends the middle school there. So I keep hearing, I keep hearing so many comments, it seems like so many people are making this so political. It's like the focus is making it about politics. The focus is so much on the subject matter of that book, and the focus should be on the content in that book. I read the book, I saw the pictures, I was disgusted. I, I, bottom line is, a book with content like that, with sexual content like that, has no place in the middle school, bottom line. I mean, it's completely unacceptable. I've already voiced my concern. I know I've already been in contact with people at the school about this, but I had to have my voice heard tonight as well. I just don't understand why so many people are giving this book a free pass to be on the shelf at this middle school purely because of the subject matter. I would feel the same about the content of this book if it was about any other subject matter, and that is the truth. There are many parents that agree with me on this. And quite frankly, I'm just, I'm just very disappointed in the school district that you are allowing this, this type of book to be in the school. The thing is, think about this, you can be supportive of people LGBTQ, you can be supportive without having material with sexual content in the school, and that is the truth. So I don't, don't understand why, why this book is getting a free pass to be on the shelf in the, in the school.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Goldstein, West Scott Bridge. My daughter goes to school here. I kind of wanted to address the point that was just made, which I'm very greatly concerned about. We're focusing on this book, and I'm really concerned is about our civil liberties. Banning books is unacceptable on any level, and I'm really concerned that the school board needs to make that statement very, very clearly. And when I hear about the policies that we have to go through, these committee meetings, we're going to go through the selection of books, no. The policy that needs to be changed, or the policy that needs to be instituted, is that the police are not allowed to come into this school without a warrant, a proper warrant. That's the policy that needs to be instilled at this time. Going through this election, you have a policy, it's already there on the website. If someone wants to complain, they can complain. We don't need to go through this. And what I'm concerned about is that in 2022, in Tennessee, they banned a similar, they banned a graphic novel for its language being vulgar in the nudity in it. You know who that was? That was Max, The Depiction of the Holocaust. That was an eighth grade curriculum book that was banned because they deemed it pornographic. So once we start going down this line, what's pornographic, we're going to start banning everything. Anne Frank has been banned throughout this country, because Anne Frank discussed in the book, not about the Holocaust it was banned, it's been banned because of the talk of her sexual urges, her fantasies of the boy that, the family that they're with. It's been banned around the country for that. So we need to be very careful here, that we are protecting the rights for the students to read books in the school. Thank you.
Annie Alquist.
Hi, everybody, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Annie Alquist, I live at 219 South Street in Housatonic. And I just wanted to let you guys know, I have three, two, sorry, other people here. One of them is my sixth grade daughter who would like to make some comments too. So when I'm done, I'm going to have her re-raise her hand so that, oh no, she doesn't. Okay, but if you see my hand go up again, it's not me making a second comment, it's my daughter. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to also address the, the, you know, a couple things. First, we do have, as, you know, as you guys have explained at other meetings, we do have a policy for how parents can express their concerns about particular books. And it's my understanding that that policy was not followed in this case. So where I disagree with the other parents about whether or not they think this particular book is appropriate, I totally agree that they have the right to decide for their own children what they should or should not have access to, and I have the right to decide for my own child what they do or do not have access to. So I hope that we as a community can agree, you know, can at least agree that it's okay that we have differing opinions on this. There was a process and it wasn't followed. So I respect, while I don't agree with that viewpoint, I respect that differing viewpoints are going to happen and I hope that our community is strong enough to handle that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, someone else mentioned the Stoke Collective report and how it gave the district a clear roadmap for how to move forward. Because I think it's really important that we acknowledge that we are not as progressive as we think we are. There are progressive voices in this community. There are conservative voices in this community. There are white folks, black folks, brown folks, immigrants, English speakers, Spanish speakers. Like we have a diverse community and that's a beautiful thing. And making room for our differences doesn't mean excluding the, you know, white conservative voices. It doesn't mean excluding the LGBTQ. Like, everybody should have a voice, including the voices that I don't agree with. And my question is, when is the district going to make a clear and actionable timeline of putting into action the roadmap that was outlined by the Stoke Collective? And when can we as community members see that so that we can hold you accountable to it? Because what I heard at the last meeting and what I keep hearing is that, "Oh, it's taken over a month for the teachers to respond to the students because they're not ready." "Oh, it took so long for this or that response because we're not ready." Quite frankly, at this point, there is no excuse for this district to not be ready. When can we expect to see a document that we can hold and look at and all see together that will outline the actionable steps that the district is taking to put into action the Stoke Collective's roadmap? And can we see that document by the next meeting? And that's the end of my question.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't have the answer to that, so we're not prepared.
I'm a fourth grader. I live in sixth grade at the school. And I was just hearing people say that we should have a book on the shelves because it's inappropriate content. And I feel like that definitely is up to the parents, not up to the schools to decide whether students should be reading books, like starting books. And also, it was said earlier, like one of the family forums that led a student was going to check out a book. The librarian was scared and was asked to check in with one of the other teachers because they didn't want it to be like a book that everyone's laughing at. So it's not like, no one's gonna, I feel like, it's like, people don't really, I feel like they think that everyone is just like checking it out and they can just like, do whatever they want with the book. But it also is like, it, it's like, students are ready to read the book, probably will read the book. And I just feel like, there's like, no, there's nothing wrong with it. And also, in middle schools, probably when students are going to start like, thinking about this kind of stuff that depicts like some grade readers and like maybe the younger grades. But I feel like it's also like, it was said that the book also like helped a lot of children and also adults. Because they said that, like, one speaker said that it was able to, like, help them like understand a lot of stuff. And it was amazing. So I just don't think that the book should be banned and there's no good reason. And like, I'm a student of that device, so yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucy Holland. I live in Stockbridge. My three kids went to high school here. My youngest, I'm a proud mother of a queer daughter who went to middle school here. And I'd love to reiterate a bunch of things people said, but no need, except just a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I stand very strongly with a person who said, "What are we doing tomorrow to provide support to these kids who are in the middle of all this right now?" Super important. What are we doing for the teacher who has had to leave, who has been described, as I've heard it tonight, as a rock star and among the most supportive people of middle school kids finding their way? How is it possible that the sequence of events occurred when this person was known to be a rock star? How is it possible that... I'm new to this process, so I haven't heard all of the previous material. So if I'm asking about something that you feel has been well-covered, I apologize about that. In terms of making apologies, which are of course a good thing, the thing I want to put out there is, in all the various ways that we're facing major issues in our culture around racism, homophobia, all these things, as adults, when we find ourselves in the crosshairs of these complicated situations, I think it's really important for us to be as transparent as possible in how we're shown up. How did we make that decision? What was it based on inside of us that those series of things happened? It's one thing to make an, offer an apology like, "Oh, that wasn't handled the best way." Or, "We have policies we ignored," or, "Obviously, we ignored some check-in over even a great teacher and had them ostracized." But the interesting thing, our kids need to see this in us, is transparency inside of us. What was hard for us? How did we screw up and why? Where do our belief systems come from? And what are we doing to dismantle them in ourselves as we move forward in any of these group processes that we hope to lead to greater understanding, more assertive justice, and less harm? So I would like to request, and one person mentioned it tonight, I don't know if they were here or there, but that we're here talking to all of you, yet we don't know where you stand or how. I mean, I think it would be incumbent upon each member of this committee to be making a personal statement of self-interrogation and what personal journey you're on and we're all on to improve this situation. Otherwise, an apology, in my view, is really rather an omelette.
So I really wasn't planning on speaking. So I'm a sixth grade girl at the library. I have a kid in seventh grade here. It's long ago. What made me talk was actually you, because what I want to say is, the whole book issue is the typewriter. Like, these incidents happen all the time. And I'm really here to talk for like our child Noah and my whole, and for like a hundred kids that stand behind him in a costume. And then when you were talking, when I heard Miles, I was actually going with my phone. And Noah was going last August. And I think people who don't have a queer kid don't know that. So Noah's here since September '22. And we had like eight reported incidences to Ben Dorn or Miles Reed about Noah being directed at us. With like words of like, "I don't want to talk to you, you can be gay." "I have to like stay away from you because I could catch him." I can't even remember how many incidents. Between these incidences that were reported are at least fifteen that we didn't report because Noah was just tired of those assertive justice process where everything is apologetic, not being practiced. And we asked Noah if they wanted to come tonight and Noah was like, "No, because I'm tired of fighting." And I want to have a day where I can go and talk about it. And that's seventh grade. They're not at the 12th grade. So that is really just the typewriter. And that's the work that has to be done. And this work can only happen if we train the teachers, if we train the students, and if we're like working on the tolerance of students, at least as much as our own teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nolias Alamede and I'm a senior at Monument Rowland. I'm also a multiracial and a queer student at that school and I am a part of or a leader of most, if not all, groups that have been mentioned at this meeting. It's hard to hear my resume reported back to me as action items of how the school is protecting themselves because I'm tired. And for those of you who are already in the community forum, I'm going to repeat some of my points there because I think it's important that they're heard here. This shouldn't be our job or our labor. I'm taking notes in my physics homework, my physics notebook right now. I have homework to do. I just ran from rehearsal. This shouldn't be our fight. It shouldn't be the fight of the sixth graders who are getting up. It should be the fight of Miles who I've been like able to know for most of their life. Like, this should not be our labor and it should not be our job and none of these things should be. And having to be brave as a child is unfair and exhausting. And hearing that parent talk about their seventh grader who doesn't want to fight today, we are not creating a safe environment for our students if that is how students are feeling. And I get that kid because that's how I'm feeling. Since this incident, I have friends who have been harassed, followed, called slurs and names. They are unsafe in school. They are failing classes because they are harassed so much in those classes. And all of the sudden, people are listening and paying attention. I promise you, this was happening before. It has been happening. And it has only increased since this incident. And in so many ways, I was worried that maybe it was because we decided to respond. I was one of the students who led the walkout. And I realized it wasn't because we responded. It was because someone called the cops in the first place because someone made a complaint about the book. And I think one of the best ways to explain what it feels like to be a marginalized person in this world is to have someone else's words be able to jeopardize your safety. And that's exactly what this person did. They jeopardized all of our safety. And I understand that a mistake was made, but you also jeopardized our safety. And that's a really heavy and hard thing to hold on to. And schools are opportunities to build a world that we want to raise our kids in. I don't want to raise kids in a world like this. I am sure that my parents who are sitting here right now don't really want to be raising kids in a world like this, but here we are. And I just think that when we talk about schools as a microcosm, we need to be thinking about what an opportunity that is to raise incredible people. Not people who are brave, not people who know how to fight the fight, but people who know how to love and love deeply. If there's anything the queer community has taught me, it is that. I'm not up here today because I'm one of the students who are, is harassed. I'm deeply protected by my role at the school. I'm up here today because it is so sad and so hard to hear my friends talk about what it feels like to get up every morning and go to school. School is hard, but it shouldn't be hard like this. And we can't exploit our kids anymore. We can't expect us to get up here every day and fight this fight for you all. We need adults who are doing the job and taking the lead from us, but not expecting us to carry all of it. And I think most importantly, it's not about the incident. I mean, we learn in school about dictatorships. We learn about instances like this. And to hear it happening in our own community is terrifying. But it's not ever meant about the incident. All of these things existed before. What it's really about is that you all are here because you care. I believe that. And every single teacher that shows up in that school is here because they care. I was talking to my English teacher. We read much more vulgar material. It just happens to be heterosexual and it is not pants. But when we talk about supporting our students, it all feels like empty promises. I'm graduating in a few months. And honestly, I thought I wouldn't be done with this school, but I kind of am. And it breaks my heart because I love the people in it. And I love the people who are working to make it better. But we need to be supporting the people who are working so hard and we need to be caring for those people so much more. We should be able to just go to class and learn and grow up and be kids and none of this should be our job.
Thank you very much. Annie Alquist? I don't think it's Annie. I think it's her daughter.
Yeah, here, it's not me again. It's my daughter.
Hi, my name is Edith Burns. I'm a sixth grade student in middle school. A couple of weeks ago, the middle school had a walkout. I was surprised when I saw my principal, Mr. Wheat, walk out with us and didn't think to come up in front of us and say something. The majority of the school was out there. Yet I felt uncomfortable when Mr. Wheat was just standing in the back, not even being seen. My question is to Mr. Wheat, when are you going to stand up to talk to us, the students? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Prando. I live in Monterey and I've got a seventh grader, two boys. I have a ninth grader who just graduated, who was part of the GSA, and I've got an eleventh grader at Monument. And I was reminded when I was in eighth grade, I went to Richmond. And it just happened, this was a choice that occurred. And so all the high schools from the region came to Richmond for the eighth grade night to kind of say please come to our high school. And my parents were there and all the eighth grade teachers and all. I'm trying to pay the scene. Everyone was there. And my parents stood up and they said, "First question, which one of these schools is going to give my daughter a condom? Because she's not going there." And I don't know what the answer is because I blacked out. I died. But what I wanted to say is, looking back, that's the way to do it, right? They didn't call the police. They didn't weaponize our law enforcement agency against a vulnerable population. They had some values. They stood up for them publicly. And I appreciate everybody who continues to do that and to show up and to share their voice and their opinion. And I appreciate everybody giving us this opportunity to be part of this as well, because this is a community conversation. I love my parents. They're my heroes. But my family's very different. And so I read this book this summer at a very gay bookstore in Robinstown. And immediately bought it for my daughter because I knew she would like it. And she's going to ninth grade. It was going to be a Christmas present. So I recognized the book when it came home from school with my seventh grader, with my seventh grade son, his fall. And because I'd read it, I knew it had mature, challenging content. And so I asked him where I got it. And he said, "I got it from school." And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "I signed it out for my teacher, who's the head of the GSA." And immediately I was like, "Oh, oh, hey, great." Because I'm the expert on my kid. I'm the expert on all three of my kids, as much as they may not think I am. I am. And I'm not the expert on seventh grade development. I'm not the expert on seventh grade and middle school education. But that teacher sure is. And I trust her. I trust her and I'm so grateful that she is part of my children's development and that she is providing the context for challenging material. That it is not a book that somebody's giggling over in a corner. That it's part of a larger conversation that the GSA is holding. So I further asked my son, when this all happened, "Tell me more about how you got this book." And he told me it was part of a banned book exhibit in the library. He saw it there. He took it to the librarian and just like Lori was telling us, the librarian said, "Ooh, no, you can't check it out. But you can ask the head of the GSA about it." And so he did. He followed up. And the head of the GSA knows me, knows that his older sister was a leader in the GSA. And he made an informed, contextual... sister was a leader in the GSA, and he made an informed, contextual decision in her discretion to let him sign that book out, knowing that when he brought it home, we would follow up with conversations, which we did. So I want to be really clear, there are adults involved, there are adults who care so much about our kids and providing appropriate structure and context, and not, just like Gloria said, not letting kids who may not be ready to take this on, not trying to start a battle of values, but rather to support our most vulnerable students as they create their identity here in this vulnerable time. So I told you that my son read it, so what happened? What's the impact? What happened to him? So I can share two things that happened just today. He told me in the car ride, his car ride's a really important example, and I'll listen to that, that the bullying, there's always bullies, right? This is middle school, this is life. He uses the word gay to torment, calls him gay all the time, right? And he had a really brave rejoinder to that, and I said, "Ooh, where did you get that?" And he said, "From a graphic novel in GSA I read." Then later, we had another conversation, we had a conversation that I was messing up people's pronouns, that I like to blame on my old brain, just doesn't have the wiring, but I'm going to keep trying. And he said, "Well, I got a trick for you. Imagine different scenarios with those people before you even have to engage, and use the correct pronouns in your imaginary scenarios, and you'll get into the habit, and you'll rewire your brain faster." I said, "Oh my God, that's a great idea, where did you get that?" Gender queer from the GSA. So I don't even know if any other student has checked out this book or signed it out besides my son, but I want to let everyone know, it's working to have a GSA, and there's so much that is working. The fact that the library had a banned book exhibit in the fall in the first place, the fact that we have a really amazing GSA, the fact that we have such a wonderful community, what happened on the age was not in alignment with what works, it was not in alignment with our values. And we need to do something to bring it back into alignment, it's not just processing, it's action. And I know we've got to wrap up, but this is my big point, so I'll just wrap it up real fast here. We had a gross incident already last spring, and there was promises of PD, and let's look at the policy changes, and over the summer, the teachers are all going to change, and we're going to get everybody up to speed and educated. What? This isn't a policy fix. This is about our culture and our values coming back into alignment to support what works and not giving in to authority and relationship that we prize, that promotes the status quo and what we are most comfortable with. The values are there, the people are there, we have a wonderful community, we have such wonderful leaders and educators. Let's get it all back into alignment, but that's a doing, it's not a feeling. Thank you.
Thanks, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
My name's Emily Woodward, I'm a parent of an eighth grader at DuBois and a third grader across the street at Muddy Brook. I'm involved with the DuBois family crew, but I'll be talking here just as an individual. And as for my background, I'm a community mental health psychotherapist, and I also have a law degree from Northeastern, so lots of hot topics for me coming up tonight, and I appreciate the openness of this forum. We're hearing tonight that certain classroom materials are so easily or clearly inside or outside the law, that there's a real bright, clear bottom line somewhere that school staff can easily find and follow. And my comment is just that history shows us that this is simply not the case. And to me, the great example of that is that our district attorney, DA Shagru, his response, declining to follow up on this complaint, shows that discretionary enforcement of criminal law lies way outside the district curriculum review process, which should have taken precedence here. And what happened instead was a functional ban, a backdoor ban on classroom material, not through the proper review process and not through the DA's office or the police department, but through the deeply chilling effect of this still inexplicably to me anonymous complaint and the, in my opinion, overzealous and misguided police officer's actions. They may have functionally frightened this book off of the shelf, maybe temporarily, but even worse, they frightened our wonderful teacher, my eighth grade student's teacher in his classroom. And so many, as we've heard tonight, other students from our school and other family and community members, with this, again, in my opinion, politically motivated, overreached with a sense of impunity that the law and jurisprudence and certainly, you know, not just the district, but like state policy and curriculum review procedure just doesn't support. Their combined actions, the complainant and the police officer, are what stepped over the clear line here, in my opinion. That line is to protect student safety and student intellectual freedom and the freedom for our faculty members to use their expertise, as our last commenter pointed out, use that expertise and that trust, and we need to restore that in our classrooms and in our community. As for the school committee's next moves here, I urge you to not just look ahead, but also back at the thoughtful guardrails and guidelines that were in place around access to the book in question here. I think that's warranted as well. This was not a Playboy magazine, it wasn't a creepy OnlyFans video that one student was showing to another student on a phone at recess, it wasn't an unwanted text or a photo or a piece of graffiti, it wasn't even a health class textbook, it was well contextualized literature content for our older middle school students. And context matters, it has to matter. I'm sure it's no surprise to the committee, although it seems to shock some of my fellow middle school parents here tonight, that thirteen and fourteen year olds, eighth grade students, hear about, think about, learn about, observe, and consider matters of identity and sexuality, not to mention civil rights and media literacy, all the time at school and everywhere else. It's developmentally appropriate for them to grapple with this, and it's incumbent on our committee, on the faculty, and us, on us as parents, to ensure their continued access to accurate, thoughtful, and diverse sources of information to support their maturation. I think we can all do better in this area. Thank you.
All people, there's no one else online, and then the school committee, I'll let you all speak to afterwards, I'll start.
My name is Joshua Briggs, I'm from Tarrano, Massachusetts. I have three students in the district, high schooler Sadie, in the middle school here, Noah, and then the often booked Miles, who's in fifth grade. Just if you want a little more context for that, from Miles's estimation, the kids involved in that were two eighth grade boys and two high school students. And to make you feel better about it, Miles handled themselves remarkably, because they've had a lot of practice, about two years' worth of practice. For those of us doing math, that's since the third grade. So a lot of much more eloquent and intelligent people have spoken before me, but I do want to, in thinking about that incident, just direct, because this can feel overwhelming, I think for all of us, what do we do, what do we do tomorrow, what would we have done? There was a real communication gap that continues, and I think the issue is that there are people who will take extreme positions, and because we want to make sure that we're understanding all positions, which I highly respect and is a deep belief of mine, echoing other parents, I think there is a robust conversation to have about what content we think is appropriate in school through the proper procedures. That's fine, but as the ACLU pointed out extremely articulately in a letter that they sent to this district a month ago at this point perhaps, this was not pornography. And yet, the students, that was what they were yelling in my son's face, because it's pornography, because it's pornography. It would have been very easy, without taking a position of, "We're trying to alienate parents who might not want this book," to stick to certain facts. Well, you might not think it's appropriate, but it's not pornography, that could have been stated, that could be stated to our community, because it seems relatively straightforward. Also, in response, this is a little off topic, but I actually do think it needs to be said, I respectfully disagree with some of the voices that have come up tonight, but one point that I don't have a lot of respect when I disagree with is that being gay, being queer is in fact not a political position, it's just a fact. People who don't approve of this content, I think that's a robust debate, and I think it's an appropriate debate for our community, but the fact of the matter is, those of us who are here tonight are not making political statements, we're protecting our children who are who they are. So in thinking about this, I think some of the moves that could be made, well within being and understanding and hearing our voices, is identifying those facts, because the fact of the matter is, when we use facts, we have power, that this isn't pornography, that what Gloria so intelligently pointed out, that there are all these guardrails around how this book was used, I don't think that has been communicated to our community. And instead, this narrative has been able to build in the relative silence of what happened. And I think the thing that I urge you to remember in the future, as you're thinking about carefully crafting a response to make sure that it's exactly right, is that no response is a very loud response. And for one week and another week, and even through today, we've been hearing that response over and over again, and people have filled the vacuum, the boys on the bus filled that vacuum, and they used it to go after my son.
Hi, I'm Nick, I live in Stockbridge, I graduated from this school last year, and now it's at Art Academy at Times Rock. So I just wanted to orient this to not only the school board, but to the school itself. But for a quick second, I just wanted to bring it back to the fact that this incident has on students. The only number of other comments I've heard, Mr. Wheat keeps talking about a safe space that is being actively promoted in the school. Though, whatever, what has been brought up is that there have been many incidences of homophobic incidents not unlike this one happening. This is showing that this safe space that is being talked about hasn't existed. In my four years of being at the school, the space that this teacher provided and the energy that they put into their classroom and the GSA was finally a safe space for many of the students. This teacher created the safe space that's been talked about and that has been stated as the school's mission. I don't have the book, I have a big book, but I'm just thinking about what this system that, that without the system of support for these students, where do they go? Where do they feel safe to be themselves? I'm worried that without this teacher, students won't have this safe space. This teacher could have found effect on me straight now, whether it is offering help on high school applications or finding more about who you are, this teacher was there with students. I understand that resolving an issue like this takes time, though in the meantime, well, students are given support from this teacher.
Hi, I'm Tom Hocker, I was tonic. I, I'll say that I don't have any children. I'm a straight, white man, cisgender, born with lots of privilege, right? And I think that's the point, is that this is probably the first time a lot of people on the stage have had to think about this. I think it's probably some first times that administrators had to think about it, and I think we all need to be allies for our peers, for their children. If we don't do that, we're bystanders, and that's exactly what we're trying to control not. Thank you.
My name is Joe Orville, I live on Monterey Road. I don't have any kids in the school, I'm an old guy, but I'm a big supporter of education, and my partner and I have 48 years to pay taxes. And there are a couple things. I don't know why I have to identify myself when the person who made this complaint is still being protected in Rhode Island. Still, still shit about a police chief after people like this happen. I don't, I don't understand a lot about this. What I do know is, if that book had been around when I was having kicked out of me as a kid for being queer and different in middle school or even elementary school, because I was a different kid, I'm a different guy, it would have helped immensely. There is a term called invincible ignorance, and I will attribute that to some of our callers tonight, who didn't have guts to come here in person, but instead did it from the nonsense of their computers, guns, guns. I would like any of those groups to come here and look me in the eye and talk some of that filth. And I'll bet the person who got into that classroom to take those pictures is probably not, that's the word, a very secure person in their own sexuality, and I bet they looked in their own page.
One of the few guests, we're going to allow school committee members to speak, we haven't talked about this, and puts you a little on the spot, but that's part of it. And I'll start, because first of all, I'll give you a chance to gather your thoughts, and second of all, usually I go last, but I think it's important that I go first. And what I have to say is just, what I've written as people spoke, it's not organized words, because we, we didn't have the time to do that, so hopefully it'll get the message across, and in no particular order, because I write pretty lousy, so hopefully I can even read it. First of all, it's not about one book, it's clear, which is clearly not pornography. This is, well, the book is just a symptom of a problem that we need to address. Number two would be, people are right, inappropriate behavior in our community, in our schools, nationally, does reflect what's going on throughout the world, but we need to set a much better example for our students, because it's not going to get better if we don't do that. One thing I learned growing up, and it was a long time ago, is words hurt, that hasn't changed. Something's changed, but you know, words do hurt. Someone or a few people said, "We need to start doing something tomorrow," after Miles spoke, "We do need to do something tomorrow." And I challenge each principal to cut some classes, change what you were planning to do tomorrow, and really let the students know that it's unacceptable. School is hard, school is hard for everyone. We all remember when we were in school, we remember the good times, we remember the times that were not so good. They can be really lousy for wrong reasons, you don't do well on a test, you don't get along with a teacher, we don't need to make it worse. We need to solve the problem, and we're not the only one, and that's no excuse. It's throughout the country, and we need, we need to set an example again. Police definitely don't belong in the school on this issue, that was a mistake from the beginning, I take ownership, as Peter has, but they do not belong in the school on this Book banning is unacceptable, there is no reason to ban books. Age appropriateness, maybe something to look at, but clearly not banning books, there's no reason to ban books. The hardest thing I heard, had to hear tonight, and he doesn't want my sympathy because he's stronger than I am, is Miles and what happened on the bus. That is really hard for me to understand, it's really hard for me to accept that that happened, and that needs to be taken care of, and that never has, needs to happen to Miles or anyone else in our district, or I would say anywhere in the world, but it's a little unrealistic, I can only do what we're responsible for, but that can't happen. We're responsible for what happens on our bus, we're responsible for what happens in our schools, what happens on our playgrounds, and it's a huge task, and I don't envy our staff, we have We have a really good staff. People who work in the cafeteria, people who clean the buildings, people who are our teachers, our administrative staff. We have a really good staff, and I don't envy their job. It's not a job I could ever do or would want, but we need to keep doing. And the last thing I wrote, which may be the first thing, we can do better because we have to do better. Ban the book.
I think if I were sitting where you are or anybody at home, I would want to know, what are you going to do to protect my child and make school a place where you don't just have to survive, but you can learn and you can be comfortable and you can grow? And I get it, that's all you want to have to do. And really, that's all that I ever wanted to do when my kids were there. And every time I heard of an adult or another kid or something going wrong in their day that had to be handled, it was a big deal. Because school is your world, and the bus is your world. And if those things are hard, then we're not doing what we should be doing to help kids grow and learn. And hearing the voices tonight, I want you to know that I am not going to sit here and be so separated from the school that I think the things that happened with this situation are so horrendous to me personally that I feel like I cannot let that narrative go on. Every time something like this happens, it seems like we let the things that people complain about rule the narrative. The teacher leaves. The book gets put away, gets lost. It's hard to find. I got the book at the library. I wanted to see if I could get it through the loan, and I read it. And I'm happy to have read it. And I'm happy to have been exposed to this book. And I am personally aghast at the thing that the students have said tonight. And I am so very sorry that anybody had to have that in their day. And I feel like as a community, we have to do everything in our power to make our response to this a strong one, but not squelch other people's ideas about what they feel like needs to happen. But we need to not have the narrative of the person who complains setting the narrative for us. We need to really be strong about our response here, that this is unacceptable in every way. And I will personally stand behind that. And anybody who wants to talk to me about it or tell me their story, I am happy to hear about it because I don't want to sit on this committee and be separated from the school no longer. Not from the teachers, not from the kids. I want you to know that my heart is in this, and it has been, even though I don't have any kids at the school anymore. And every day where I work, I conduct myself in a way that I put my best foot forward for every patient that I treat. So if you have any doubt of where I stand on this, I hope that that clarifies it completely.
Maybe you blew the microphone up if you want.
I just really appreciate all of the voices that we heard tonight, and just the very powerful and thoughtful words. And I completely agree with everything that Stephen Dayan said. And I just also want to say that I appreciate being a part of the committee and the response and the apologies and everything. And I feel very strongly still that the kids all need to be addressed and apologize to. And, you know, have things explained to them in a way that they can really understand about what happened with their teacher and what's going on with the situation. And that's really it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cory. I'm a parent of four children that have graduated from Monument. One of my children openly identifies as queer. I read the book. I thought it was an important book. I do not think it was in any way pornographic. I do not support book bans. I fully support the teacher in question. I share people's intense frustration that the person who started this remains anonymous. I appreciate all of you that have gotten out to share your concerns. I tend to be the one in meetings to take Kopia's notes and then bug Peter and Steve or anyone else in question about follow-up. And I will be certainly continuing in that vein to follow up on all of the important things that were shared by all of you in this moment and tonight. And to that, I will do what I can do to hold the administrators accountable. But I think mostly, I apologize on behalf of myself that it's taken this long for all of you who've been sitting here wondering what we've been thinking. It's been difficult because the timing of this happened where we weren't able to talk, and it was unclear as to what we could publicly say. So I'm very grateful to have this time right now. And I don't want there to be any questions about how I feel. And if anyone has any questions, please reach out to me. But I stand in support of the book and the teacher. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vivian Richardson. I have a son and senior now. Actually, all of my kids are marginalized for one reason or another, whether it's their color or their gender identity. So I am horrified by what happened. I mean, just, it's one of those things you can't sleep at night, thinking that this happened, it's happened at the school. A police officer came into the school. I apologize to everybody that it ever happened. And I hope and plan that we will have policies that there will be no police officers in the school unless there's a warrant or an emergency of life and death. Thank you so much for everybody who shared. And I respect those few folks who have different opinions and that they should have the right to be able to say, "That's not the book I want my kid to see." But I want more respect that all kids need to have access to all the information they need, and whether that comes from their families, or it comes from their teachers, or it comes from students or coworkers, that we need to be open and accepting of all people. And we need to be able to show that to everyone. It's very hard with kids. They all come from different places. And so, having had kids who are taunted for various reasons in the past, it's really hard for the adults in the room to control the web. It is very hard. And it has to be that everyone continues to talk about it and continues to talk about why it's not okay, why it's not okay that kids speak that way to each other. And that any adult in the room needs to hold everyone in the room accountable for the things they say, or the bus, or anywhere else that those things happen. But thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing. And I agree, the marginalized people are not the ones who are supposed to help. Hold all this to us, the white, you know, cisgender people. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom. I have five children, three that are already going to be online, and I'm an eighth grader, and I have a tenth later. And I appreciate everything that the school faculty has done. My kids have had great experiences. Not perfect, but great. But unfortunately, the people that need to be hearing all of this are not in this room. You know, everyone here can love each other and embrace each other, but the people that need to hear that aren't here. So that makes it hard. The teachers and the staff work so hard in teaching everyone to be open and accepting. But then you have the kids that... What they're getting from home and in the community. And unfortunately, that's not always what we're teaching at school. So we're constantly fighting about. It's just, it's how it is. And with a smaller community, we're not as diversified as the larger cities. I mean, heck, when my boys were younger, I would go out to the Cape, specifically to Providence Town for the gay pride parade every year so that I could show my kids that it takes all types of people to make the world go round and to make it a wonderful place. How that person feels or how they choose to dress or identify, you know, it's all these wonderful things that make the world great. Embrace it. Just because it's different does not mean it's bad. It's just something different. And unfortunately, not a lot of other people are teaching their kids that. And, you know, we keep fighting and fighting here, and there's still more to do, and we'll continue to do that. And, you know, these kids, they're our future, and they deserve a happy, safe place to learn and to grow. And so, thank you all for coming and sharing your experiences, your thoughts, whether I agree with you or not. I appreciate all of your feedback. And I've taken lots of notes so that I can review and reprocess some of our stuff. But thank you all for coming on tonight. We really appreciate it.
My name is Jason Stent. I'm a pre-teen district with the school and high school in Stockbridge. You know, my colleagues have said that a lot more elderly than I ever could, but I echo all of the thoughts. I appreciate it. Diane and everyone, very well said. I also want to thank everyone who's speaking on tonight, but especially the students. I'm going to go on. I always think that it takes a lot of energy and courage to get up there. And a lot of things about me, obviously, many things about the whole situation, but how the first number priority is to care for kids, children, and in this case, male, and especially the elderly. The bus community, you know, marginalized historically, there's still a lot. You know, what killed me most is, you know, how it's hearing the words and not subjecting them. So obviously, we have to do a better job. I know we said that before in terms of hearing that, but, you know, obviously, I can't deny how to make sure that every single kid and student and child in this district, no matter where you are, provide a best learning, safe learning environment for you. And you should just buy some B2B and play every day, just to do the best I can. Thank you all for coming and speaking, but especially, you know, every single kid. I'm amazed at how elderly they were, how well spoken, a lot better than I am, jealous about that, but also their status that they helped me do that. Thank you very much.
My name is Bill James. My context is I taught forty years of social studies at Monument. And I went on to your cabinet in the back down as I laundered the class a lot, so. I have great concerns over this whole incident. The night that I was made aware of it, I sent a long message to the town manager in which I expressed my anger and my concern on what I called "a growing substance creeping into terrorism." I taught history, obviously, so. I mean, I have one granddaughter who was a junior this year at Monument. I have three daughters graduated from the school. And I have an older granddaughter who graduated last year. So I have some context. I have been myself a target of a book ban. I taught, of course, a lot of that for many, many years. And some of the topics that I taught about were very sensitive. And I did do a book, a beautiful book, about an elderly couple looking back at their life. And a school committee's son was reading the book, and there was an explicit sex scene in the middle of the book. It was a cover page book. It was about page thirty-five, I think. And the father was on the school board. Right, having a date with me and immediately said, "You're taking this totally out of context." As I am seeing now, this unnamed person who has done the same thing, but I think there's been more behind him. Unfortunately, hate, prejudice, bias, and tolerance are always going to be present. But they do sleep, but they always sleep with one eye open. And there is a chance for those if those sleepers come. There are not a lot of them, but as was said earlier, they can make a lot of noise, as it's called, and it returns to hectic speeds. I have real great concerns about the students. And my wife, a type, is very emotional at home when I look at my favorite program called A Midlife. All I have to do is start listening to them. I have tears coming out of my eyes. And then also, when I'm in the mood, I want to watch To Kill a Mockingbird, but I maybe assume the music's not as good. So I'm usually not that way for the public means, but listening to them all, I thought about the men's students that I had and what I didn't know about them, but that I tried to open myself to them and be as fair, and I think I was fair in most cases. And whenever I slipped up, as was many times, I would apologize to the student. I would take the student aside and say, "I'm very sorry that you feel..." You know, I used to make, you know, cracks sometimes. And I would suddenly say to myself, "You shouldn't have said that." And I would take the student and say, "I'm very sorry, I apologize." And I was at the forum last week, and I come back with Peter and Miles because I heard them do the same thing. I heard them say they messed up. And they did mess up. But they did it. So what are we doing now? We could just say, "They messed up, they messed up." No. We have to do something to rectify. We have policies. I've talked, I was at the high school today. I've talked to the headmaster, Eric Power, who I taught with also for ten years. We have policies in place. They're very good. I read them. They're very good policies, but they weren't followed. They weren't followed by somebody who knew the policy was, talking to me, and didn't want to put their name on a complaint. And so as Ben said at the Sluggins meeting, saw a chance to use the police as a political weapon. And the police should have seen that. That's another issue. That's the town issue. I'm here for the district, and I'm here for the students and the staff. And I have, I have a one feeling I have for teachers. And I'm biased, I'm sorry. I like teachers. I did it for 40 years. I have great concerns about how the staff is going to relate to each other because of this unknown person, this complaint. How does that affect how staff works with each other, and is cooperative with each other? And you need another teacher when you're working in this environment. The students know how stressful it is, but think of what the teachers are going through. We've gone through COVID. We've gone through teachers being looked at on a screen. One teacher being reprimanded by a parent. You could not buy that over the head of a student. So teachers have had an enormous amount of stress. And now what is a student? This just adds to it. So I'm very concerned about how the staff is looking at how they relate and work with people, and how they, and the other thing is the students. I can't believe how students would not be threatened by knowing the police came into the school, the material they were using. I, I, I'm not sure how you deal with telling a student you shouldn't be a threat, when what do they see? They see this. They see this threat. They feel unsafe, even though the police try to make them safe. I have great concerns about the intrusion of outside influences, the police, in the use of curriculum and supplementary material. And the fact that teachers may censor themselves, and in that case, the complaint is one. I am for, I used to tell my students, "I don't care what the hell you read, as long as you read." And I still believe that. Reading is important. I've never felt that this district was in any way backing any sort of removal of books. I was on a committee that looked at a book in the middle of the school. It was called Go Ask Alice, and there was a complaint. And I was on a committee that reviewed the book. And it wasn't as, the policy wasn't as detailed as it is now, but we came to a conclusion that the book was not inappropriate for seventh and eighth grade. And that it passed the muster of what we at that time knew about what was appropriate. So I feel concerned, and I have great concerns about what's going to come out of this. I think what's going to come out of it is a stronger policy, a policy that delineates police and the, we have a memory of other students with the police that does not mention us. That will be hopefully corrected. What is the proper role? And in my sense, I think doing that will add to at least a feeling that students and staff feel supported. And I would like to recommend to this committee that we, as a school committee, pass a resolution at the next meeting in which we express our strong, strong support for the staff and students in this district in regards to not just this issue, but others that have arisen in the past, or may come out in the future. So that's where I stand. And that's, if you can talk to me after, I am just, again, I just feel so bad for the students. And little Miles and big Noel, you're both, you're both big. And I think you are to be just, I don't know what to say, just my heart cry when I heard you talking about Monument. Monument means a lot, and to hear, and I know it goes on. I will go on anymore. Thank you.
Did I let you have the last word, and then I'll wrap up?
No, it's, it's hard to have the last word, particularly when people speak like that. What I'd like to say is sort of two things. I want to tell you how I spent my day-to-day very quickly. And then, and then I want to thank you and ask you to watch for changes in the coming weeks and months. I spent my day-to-day doing three things. I got to, and this doesn't happen much, maybe it's happened twice since I've been here. I got to spend most of the day with the principals and the director of learning and teaching, working on a five-year plan to make our schools and district better. It's not going to be ready for next meeting. It may not be ready for a couple more months. But we were really digging into this, and there was all the stuff about curriculum and learning and assessment. And there was a really thoughtful conversation about many of the D E I B things that came up in the context of the Stoke Report and our ongoing work. So I'm optimistic about that. I then missed lunch to go have lunch with the seventh and eighth grade students, to have a similar meeting with them as this meeting, or the family meeting, or the staff meeting. And seven and eighth graders, more than anybody I know, are really good at figuring out hypocrisy, and if grownups are being inauthentic. And many of you raised complex questions and concerns, and they raised even harder ones. And we tried to work through that. And I don't, it'd be presumptuous to say that it was healing, but it was a first step. And then I got to come here and go first to an executive session that led to the, those two votes to do an investigation and to hire a particular firm to help do that investigation. I think we're going to make sense of this, and I think we're going to make a lot of progress. But I don't want, some people have sort of brought up the idea of hollow commitments or empty promises. Keep checking in with us on the progress that we're making. And some of that progress has to be looking into what happened on the bus the other day. And some of that progress has to be, and I see, and I'm sorry to call it out, but I see reactions to that, even if I'm saying that some of the progress has to be addressing it in the very fabric of our institutions in the district. And as many, and as, in all interactions that happen in classrooms, in, on buses, in playgrounds, and in all these other places. And we have a lot of work to do, and we're very committed to doing, doing better. So thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark, for being here. Thank you for being here. We are here.